The time is 7:00 PM and it is time for the regular meeting of the Hallowtown Board of Education to come to order. As the administrators and board members take their place at the dais, we will take a roll call. Mr. Garmen.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Dr. Lo.
Present.
Mrs. Malley. Mrs. Malley did indicate she'd be running in late. Mrs. Mangano.
Here.
Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bon Jovani.
Present.
A quorum is present. Shall we please rise to salute the flag and then remain standing to be regaled with a rendition of the National Anthem from our Memorial Vth graders Devon Davis and Aidan Velez and then remain standing for another moment. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Our community seems to have been rocked lately with a good share of bad news. Two particular losses this week. Mr. Robert Walsh, who if you noticed on the way in, the street in front is named for him, was a huge contributor to the municipal governing body and to the town as a whole with numerous benevolent groups, the Optimist Club and similar. He lost a courageous fight with cancer this week. And additionally, Mr. Herbert Massa, who served in the position I hold now and was my mentor for 28 years. He saw this community go from a small farm community and during his tenure, he had stability to guide us as our student population tripled. Much of what the district is today was much at his hand and I'd like to ask you for a moment of silence to recognize those two and the other losses in the community this week. Do we have a certificate for the singers?
When did you wear something?
We missed your deposit. It wasn't the same. So I couldn't make it. It's like, wow, this is not the same. I'm sorry, I must have just had some of that.
Did it get better than I thought? Hmm? This committee works very difficult if you had not served on the floor to be chair.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you. Thanks for getting to the end. Thanks, guys. As the board members take their place back at the dais, the announcement by the president is read by the secretary. Adequate notices of this meeting have been posted in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, on January 22, 2020. It is now time for recognitions. Mr. Isola.
Great, thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second January meeting. Tonight, it is with great pleasure that we'll take a few moments to recognize some really awesome things that are taking place around our district. And it's with great pleasure that I'll ask Dr. Henick and Mr. Farley to be joined by, I believe, Mr. Thor and Dr. Jeffrey, as we will take the opportunity to recognize what I believe is the first time in our history, certainly in recent years, that we've had not one but two of our teaching staff be recognized for the exemplary educator award issued by the Department of Education. Who's going to go first? Dr. Henick? Great. So, Dr. Henick, the floor is yours.
Not tonight. It might work.
For the record, you didn't want to have a close call. Okay, many of Middle School South's faculty representatives, Josh Langenberg, the head of the department of education. Mr. Langenberg is a 27-year teacher that continues to sharpen and improve his skillset in the classroom. In 2018, Mr. Langenberg was recognized as an educational leader by the Board of Chosen Freeholders and was awarded a resolution commending his leadership with students in the field of engineering. He has volunteered as the advisor for a group of students pursuing careers in STEM and supports them in their bid for national recognition. In 2018, his team was awarded Best in Nation in Technology, Engineering, Aptitude, Mathematics, and Science. In 2017, he was a candidate for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. He serves as the technology student advisor and his leadership was nationally recognized and received awards in 2014 and 2018. In 2015, his chapter received the National Chapter Excellence Award. Also in 2018, he volunteered to support his students in the New Jersey School Board Steam Tank Competition and his team was awarded Best in State. He was selected as a teacher leader 2014 and 2016 by Stevens Institute of Technology to participate in an NSF grant-funded program to assist the development of effective science teaching strategies in alignment with the next-gen science standards. There are many more examples of interactions that Mr. Langenberg has accomplished that I just don't add tonight but have been accumulated over the years. Mr. Langenberg's dedication is immeasurable and his adaptability to the needs of his student district and community, including professional growth over the past 25 years, idealizes the model of an exemplary educational leader and global educator. I do not believe there exists an educator with more passion and commitment to the field of education and his continued support of our students throughout New Jersey exists in tandem with the excitement he shares daily with his students and colleagues. So, Mr. Langenberg, if you'd come up here, I know Middle School South and Hallowtown should be very happy to have you onboard.
(applause)
Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Ms. Mary Libertor as an exemplary educator and she did receive this award from the New Jersey Department of Education. Just a quick story from today that might tell you a little bit about Ms. Libertor. I had to take a busload of students, or a small group of students, over to South and I mentioned to the driver, I said, "Well, I know both of your daughters went to North." And there was only one teacher that they mentioned and that was Ms. Libertor. One of her daughters happens to be a police officer in town and the other is a nurse. But if you think about this apparent, former parent, current bus driver, who has two daughters that are in her 30s, and Ms. Libertor was the only teacher she mentioned on the bus ride. A few things about Ms. Libertor today. She's a leader in our social studies department. Mr. Harvey always goes to her, he's our social studies supervisor, and she's one of his main people he'll go to for anything related to social studies. She's a major player in the Project Plus program, so that's another thing that she does exceptionally, is help those students. She also is a mentor of mentors. So, every teacher in our building who gets certified to mentor new teachers has to be trained with Ms. Libertor. On our learning design team, she does a tremendous job there and I know Mr. Preston values her presence there on the learning design team. I guess probably the biggest thing I would say about Ms. Libertor is she is respected by all. Her students, the parents, her colleagues, the building administration, district administration, across the board. She is a class act and just a wonderful, caring, compassionate teacher and I couldn't be more proud to be the principal at a school that has Ms. Libertor. Congratulations.
Mr. Bon Jovani will be presenting this evening.
One of the things we're going to be talking about later this afternoon or this evening is a resolution. And part of the discussion with that resolution talks about reaching out, not just for Howell but reaching out into the larger community, the community of Monmouth County, of the regional district, of the state. One of the things we like to talk about when we talk here is that Howell leads. And when you talk about reaching out for the benefit of students, I can't think of any further trip in terms of doing something for the benefit of our students than one of our administrators did recently. Ron, could you join me? Deal with it.
What does that mean? You didn't know, right?
No. No. Wife Touch Memory Mission is an -- Oh, I'm sorry. Wife Touch Memory Mission is an organization that has reached out to do building of schools, different improvements across Central and South America. And one of the partnerships they have is with national school boards. And every year when we go to the national conference, we see a presentation about what they do in this mission that they have. And this year, 1,200 different educators, 1,200 across the country, applied to be part of this project, this trip. And out of the 28, out of the 1,200 educators, only 28 were chosen, only one here in New Jersey. And recently, Ron had the opportunity to travel down to Dominican Republic for a week and a half?
Eight days, yes.
And you see some of the pictures behind you or behind us. He participating in, working and building on a school, infirmary, I think, is part of it.
Infirmary, computer lab, library, and a classroom.
Ron, we appreciate what you do for the children in Howell this time. We appreciate what you do for the children in this area. There could be no finer example of somebody who cares about children than to take your time, go to another country and get back down on the ground and work with a hammer and some mud and stuff, building a school for children in another place. So, thank you for representing us so well, for everything you do. Yeah, deal with it. Well, I just want to say something because as I'm looking at the -- well, I have to recognize, I was honored to go, but if you look closely at the pictures, I took a lot of things from other groups. I'm wearing an Education Foundation shirt there, giving a little girl a ball from Howell Alliance for Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. Everybody supported my trip, although the board, thank you very much for giving me the privilege, but also the rest of the community. Some of our vendors sent toothbrushes. I mean, it's a very impoverished area that we were working in, but you can see PBA shirt there. And I left all those clothes, I took 100 pounds of clothes and hygiene items down that were donated by others in the community. So, it wasn't just me. I'm very privileged to have gone, but it was the whole community. So, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't in my suit. You gonna poke me now? No. Yeah, right. I saw Katie's, I see Katie's work there and she's in trouble.
It is now time for an executive session of the board after a brief recess for the annual board photograph and then we will be going to executive session. If we could have a motion for the executive and the recess.
It's moved.
Second.
The board will be considering several things in executive session this evening. Please note the motion printed in the agenda. This evening, we'll be discussing a personnel item with a recommended increment withholding, a settlement agreement for a special ed case, the standard HIB report, and a settlement discussion of bus grievances. The board is in recess for the picture and then executive session. For the board recognition and photo, may we take the minutes, sir?
Please.
Is there a mover and seconder for the minutes?
Move it. Second.
I'm sorry, that was Mr. Thor and Mr. --
Dr. Jeffrey, yes. Dr. Thor, I'm just kidding.
Dr. Thor and Mr. -- whatever. Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Garmen.
These are on the executive session or on the regular?
Regular and exec.
Regular, yes.
Dr. Lo.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Bon Jovani.
Yes.
Minutes are approved, eight votes in favor, none opposed. Correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president comments. Mr. Bon Jovani, president of board, your comments, sir?
I have a few comments I'd like to make. One is that I'm sure it will come up in Mr. Isola's report, but I'm going to mention it anyway. I had the privilege last week of attending the Parent Academy.
University. Pardon me? I'm sorry, university.
Parent University. I thought it was a great showing. I thought it was just a wonderful night. But one of the things I would like to do is really compliment the staff. And not that I've heard from any of them in particular on this, but I know that the sessions that were covered in the morning had to have created questions in the afternoon. I'm sure that those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, when they got back to their classrooms, those conversations continued. And I'm confident that our staff probably dealt with it as long as they needed to and spent time with the students as they wanted to go through the morning and kind of debrief it. So, I would like to really thank the staff for that. I also had the opportunity this morning to attend the ribbon cutting for the Memorial School Wellness Way. We are just so fortunate between the PTA, between the foundation, between the different contributors, that this space has been made into a yoga place, a wellness place, and activities where the students can go if it's a horrible day outside and instead of being caught up and sitting at their desk during recess, that they can go and get some activities in, some physical activities, some time with friends and a little bit more relaxed. But the amazing part was just seeing the excitement both in the students who were there and also the staff who was working with them. So, I just thought that was really a wonderful opportunity. Congratulations to them. It's a neat thing. And I will stop my comments there.
Thank you, sir. It is now time for superintendent's report. Superintendent of school, Mr. Isola, you report, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sanzak. Thank you, Mr. Bon Jovani. Just also try to, you know, move through this as quickly but with meaning, as quickly as possible but with meaning. As we mentioned at our earlier January meeting, the month of January has been designated as Board Recognition Month, Board of Education Recognition Month, and I would like to once again highlight the outstanding work of our nine board members and the many board members from across the state that participate in their local communities. I did share, and Mrs. Okerson was with me at the PTO and PTA president, that, you know, the board gets to grapple with some really complex issues on a regular basis and they're just really awesome volunteers. And to my surprise, many of the PTO presidents, PTO, PTA presidents, thought you were all getting paid. But the reality is, you do this for a whopping salary of zero. And I want you to know that this senior team is certainly appreciative for your diligence and your volunteer work and your oversight of this district. And it is very clear to me that the nine individuals who are sitting on this board come to the dais each and every time with the right work in mind. And that's to take care of the students and staff in this district and to make sure that Howell Township remains among the leaders in education in our state. But I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your leadership and your support and, most importantly, your partnership in our work. So, congratulations on being an outstanding board. With that, some of the things that are exciting for you as board members, there's two things coming up. One is the Read Across America that will be later this spring. Each year, we ask if you would like to participate and we could, you know, set you up in a school. Either Ms. George or Ms. Gray will be sending a sign up, a digital sign up for you to, you know, participate in reading to our students. And there'll be dates there. We're just waiting for finalizing that schedule with some of our school partners. Once we get the dates from all the school, we'll put together a little calendar. We'll send that out to you so that you could, if you're available, certainly participate. It's a great opportunity to get and see the kids and the staff in action and I think it will remind you of why you choose to volunteer, you know, when you see what's going on in the schools. It's always nice. The second exciting thing that the board or program that the board is directly involved with is our Student Board of Education Day, which is also coming up later this spring. As you know, each year, we establish dates with each of the three five buildings for the fifth grade assemblies and we're finalizing that this week as well. And once we have that, Ms. Gray will send that out and you can share with us your availability so that we can schedule the assemblies in each of the five buildings. So, it's a great opportunity to speak with the students, fifth grade students across the district about the work that the Board of Education does and encouraging them to get involved with this great day. It's really a wonderful program and it's been very successful. I, once again, would point to Ms. Malley for putting some seeds down about this, I guess, three, four years ago now. And it really has blossomed. So, it's something that I know you all look forward to. So, that information will come to you as quickly as possible. Mr. Bon Jovani recommended or mentioned the Parent University. The feedback we received has been really wonderful, both from the staff that participated as well as the parents who attended. 18, there was a keynote, a general session by Ian Hockley, who did an amazing job, amazing job. We'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. And we had 18 breakout sessions provided by our staff from topics around mindfulness to middle school placement, you know, math, the importance of dinnertime and table time with families. So, it was really a well-received program. We had about 100 parents register. I would say about 60 actually showed. While that's not, you know, massive in terms of turnout, it's certainly a great first step and gives me reason to continue to push with this program. So, we are already started conversations about our second Parent University Session Two, which will probably be in the early fall. So, if we can do this semi-annual, I think, one each semester, it would be really great for the parents to get engaged with some of the work. Today, I hosted at Middle School South my first ever student advisory council. This is a council that has middle school students from both North and South who sit and grapple with some of the issues around their schooling. And this was like just an awesome experience. It was everything I hoped it would be and much more. I will share with you some of the agenda items. I can't share with you the conversations because we all signed a confidentiality agreement. What happens in that committee stays in that committee unless we think it's harmful to an individual or to others. But we want kids to feel free to have real, honest dialogue in there. And then any of their recommendations that are vetted out, we will certainly bring out of committee. But today, because we had students from both schools, we started with some ice-breaking activities so that they can get familiar with one another. We talked about 12 schools in one community and how they were representing the district on this panel and they got a really good understanding of that rather quickly. We established norms as a committee, how would this group function on a regular basis, and the kids had a great understanding for the importance of that. We then signed our contracts. We developed and reviewed a mission. We then talked about the Parent University and what their feelings were about that. Every one of them indicated that they thought it'd be great if their parents can get more of a glimpse about what's happening in schools so when they try to have conversations with their parents, there's connectivity. One of the suggestions that came up would be that maybe we would partner some of the committee, the panel, and some of the administrative staff and do a combined session for the fall, for the fall Parent University. How powerful to have kids lead a session for parents and staff. So, we're excited about some of the things that are coming out there. We talked about a leadership program that they'll be attending next week, actually, the Path to Leadership. It's in Long Branch on February 6. We took an opportunity to review Ian Hockley's conversation and the impact that that had. And to a student on that committee, they felt it was the single best assembly they've ever had at school and they feel like it's, you know, Ian had spoken about a movement. They feel that the movement is happening just by that one presentation. They feel like there's a difference already and they're excited to explore ways to bring a wingman-type program to the school. And they were very specific that it needs to be done by student leaders. And I couldn't tell you how articulate and how wonderful the kids spoke about this. It was really, really exciting. Some of the things we tabled for our next agenda were, you know, the best things they like about middle school and some of the challenges they are faced with in middle school. We moved that to our next agenda item, a next agenda with the students. I take a little long, a little moment on this because as I shared with, I think I shared with the board last month, I spent most of my adult life -- shared with the board last month, I spent most of my adult life in middle school. I know middle school education as well as anyone, in my opinion, and it's just, my whole adult life has been in middle school, up until a few years ago when I went to central office. Never once, other than when a kid was in a crisis or a conflict or has done something really good, did I sit and have detailed conversations about their experiences. Shameful on me as a school leader that it's taken this long, but how proud I am that I am sitting and providing a platform for student voice to help lead the future of this district. And I'm telling you, we're going to see powerful things from this group. The wonderful part of it is, the eighth graders will graduate, the seventh and sixth graders remain on the committee, and we kind of induct a new sixth grade group who then will be part of this established team. And I really think that the future is truly bright, and when we empower students and provide student voice within reason, right, students will not run the school, but they'll have a voice and impact decision-making, we're doing some things really good. I tweeted today, I know you all wait for my tweets with bated breath, but I tweeted today, "Howell leads because Howell listens." And I think that's really a good start for our first committee meeting today. So I'm really proud of that work, and I think that we're going to see great things. I'll ask Mr. Preston to describe another program that I'm really excited about, and Ms. Mangano, with your permission, I think we should move this to our community interaction. You'll see what it is. It was actually born from a conversation that we had with Mr. Thor and the committee when Mr. Thor was chairing about the, it started as the mentor, and we talked about bringing in industry leaders and finding out problems in industry. And before I take all of Bruce's speaking parts...
So what he says.
I'm going to just turn it to Bruce. We've now dubbed this the Future Proof Program, and I think you'll see why once Mr. Preston walks through quickly.
Certainly. So the concept being that our third graders today, in just ten years, will be eighteen, and therefore, they'll be the adults responsible to start solving the biggest problems of tomorrow. So in just ten years, they're going to have to be ready for that, so why not give them the head start? We also had, out of our strategic plan, a lot of conversation around designing authentic learning experiences and authentic assessment experiences for students so that they can apply what they're learning in real-life settings. Also, the connection to the community and engaging the community in that learning process, that authentic learning process. So here we are with the Future Proof Program. The idea is to ask for the input of our citizens throughout Howell Township, in whatever field or profession they may be working in, whatever that is, we're going to invite them in for a session, much like we did when we did the Strategic Planning Night. We're going to use protocols to find from them what is the value of their field of occupation to society at large, what types of problems does it solve, what problems, the largest problems, do they believe they're going to face over the course of the next ten years? And why is that problem so significant to society? We'll have people at each of those tables that will capture what is being discussed and what those problems are. We will then go back and turn those into curriculum modules that'll be made available for all students, especially grades three through eight, to be working through and applying those problems. We're very excited about it. We think it gives them a head start on solving those problems and a very real opportunity to connect with people within business and industry, to share some of those innovative ideas. You know, they're young, so they haven't had the creative ideas pushed out of them, and we're hoping to tap into that and get some real, actual solutions for some of these larger issues that are going to be shared with the community.
And I think it connects really well with our community interaction because it's engaging the community to help us provide authentic learning experiences for kids. So when we talk about community engagement, it's not inviting them to a meeting. It's actually engaging them, and to this board's credit and its charge, way back when Mr. Bon Javoni even chaired Community Interaction, I think we've been evolving and progressing as a committee with a focus. So I'm really proud to bring this forward, and we're in the process of putting the finishing touches on it. We have a video made for a request of problems.
We want your input.
And we're really excited about it. So Mr. Hallroyd, over at Newberry, is kind of spearheading that from the building level, of course, with myself and Mr. Preston's support. We think it's going to be a fantastic opportunity for our kids and for our community members. So we're excited about that. And then just two quick notes. March 19th is confirmed for our Monmouth County School Partnership Symposium Wellness Symposium for Educators. We're really doing well with the organization of this. We have Alicia Di Lorenzo will be keynoting again. We have Dr. Maurice Elias from Rutgers University as one of our speakers. Ian Hockley has agreed to speak. So we really have established an all-star cast of leading people in this industry, so we're really excited about that. March 19th, it'll be at the Neptune Pack. So we're really happy that our partners in Neptune were gracious enough to provide the venue. And then finally, backed by popular demand, will be our P3 Maker Expo on April 1st, 2020, and that will be at Middle School North again, as it was in the previous years. And finally, for my report, I say finally, finally, for my report, it is the time in the school year where we give our semi-annual public hearing on violence and vandalism and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And at this time, I'll ask Director Fernandez to approach the podium and provide the report for the public and the board.
State law requires that acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying be reported out publicly. At each board meeting, both alleged and confirmed HIB cases are reported to the Board of Education. Additional information on any HIB cases are held at the administrative offices. The information that I'll be presenting this evening reflects the period from September 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. There were nineteen cases reported in the area of violence, one case of vandalism, one case in which weapons were involved, three cases of substance abuse, and five confirmed cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The total number of incidences reported was twenty-eight. There were eighty-three HIB trainings provided and sixty-six HIB programs provided. Thank you.
And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for the first public comment. May I, sir?
Please.
Excuse me. Whereas the Howell Township Board of Education determines that the comments from the public portion of the meeting may last forty-five minutes, and they will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw, 0164.1, individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board, Mr. Mark Bon Javoni. May the floor be open for comments on the HIB report and public comments to the board.
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, sir. May the floor be closed.
Yep.
It is now time for committee updates and liaison reports. Mr. Bon Javoni, sir.
Start from my right. Mrs. Mangano.
So Community Interaction met on January 23rd. Mr. Isola already went over some of the stuff that we discussed, so I won't repeat it again.
He has that habit.
So we talked about the creation of Student Advisory Council, which was well-received by the committee, getting the students' engagement, learning to hear what's coming through the students, which is really important. We also spoke about Mr. Sanisak's long-term work in the Dominican Republic, which he doesn't want to talk about all the time, but we will talk about it because it is very important that we and him, we here in Howell, can go that far and help another country build their schools. It's really important. So, and then we also spoke about the Free Maker Expo, which will take place on YPO First at Howell School Lawrence, which is a great event. I always love going to that. As far as our committee calendar, we're keeping it open at this point and flexibility, depending on the committee members and also the citizen members. We did have one person deliver a text, so we're still waiting on that, to me and Mr. Isola, just speaking about what the next date will be. We spoke about the Parent University, very well-received from both parents and students. I know my kids came home and spoke about it, and we're very impressed with it, and I think, you know, here from the kids themselves, that we spoke about the assembly and student volumes. The Monmouth County School Partnership, which will be hosted on March 19th for educators, we already spoke about that. And then we did speak about the administrative move, where Mr. Sanisak shared that the move is on schedule and is going well. He also shared a very important thing, which is great for us, to keep our costs down and that we're using our own employees to complete infrastructure installation, and that's really good for us financially, given all these financial problems that we'll start facing. Mr. Gorman was attending the meeting, who works with the Legislative Advocacy Committee, and was speaking about some of the stuff that's going on with legislation right now regarding S 2173 and A 3818, which did not pass, which clarified statutory exemptions for mandatory immunization requirements for child consentors and school attendants. Again, that did not pass. S 2835, which did not pass as well, would require public schools to ensure written readings for precious students in certain grades. A 1335, which did pass, required political institutions to complete instruction and adopt instructional materials that accurately portray political, economic, and social contributions of persons of disability, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. So those things were spoken about. We are going to be trying to meet with Mr. Gorman and interacting with the Community Interaction meeting, because a lot more stuff goes on together, and I think it's a good group thing. We also spoke about the sadness of the community with passing of Mr. Herb Masah and Mr. Robert Walsh, two poles of our community who are will-be in this great rate. And we're going to wait and see next, what, this is going to last, but that's made.
Thank you, Mrs. Okerson.
Okay. So as Mr. Isola said, we did meet with the PTA, PTO Presidents Council on Wednesday, January 22nd, but he and Mrs. Mangano did highlight a bunch of what was said. I did attend the Parent University also, which even the presidents thought, and we all agreed, that it was a really good night, and we found a lot of useful information there. Mr. Isola did speak at that meeting about the reorg of the board and the new logo because Jess Valentino was there, who was the one who ended up designing and working on it. You know, at the end, Mr. Bon Javoni had told me I'm supposed to ask them if there's anything they want to bring back to the board, really, the concerns that they had. One was about fifth grade basketball, but Mr. Isola clarified that we don't control that. But the other was, they really liked the assembly at the Parent University regarding social media, and they were wondering if there was anything that we could do, either in the schools with the kids or for the parents separately, just learning about what is out there, social media-wise. And so Mr. Isola said that they do do that through guidance and other smaller programs, but that was the end of that meeting.
I've attended at least two different programs in two of the elementary schools where they've talked to their students about some of the fears, dangers, precautions to use in their social media, so I'm sure that's covered frequently at the schools. Thank you.
In particular, a program I attended a few months ago at Middle School North was the orientation for new incoming students, parents, and a great deal of attention was paid by Mr. Forley to that issue, going into some of those specifics.
Dr. Jeffrey, anything for the good of the board?
Though the Labor Committee has not met, we do expect that the union will be reaching onto it shortly to begin negotiations.
Great.
One of the things I did not cover before moving on before, so I'll do this real quickly, is at the last meeting, obviously, the chairs and the board members were assigned to the various committees. I do want to quickly go through who the citizen members were. For Community Interaction, Heather Larrato, Mark Parisi, Donna Cornival have all volunteered to do that. Mark will bring an interesting perspective, as he's also currently a board member for the regional district, so he'll be able to provide us with some information in terms of what's happening back and forth there. Education, Ken Nitzer and Sunny Park, Dennis O'Brien. Finance, Matthew Clark, Samantha Miller, and Jeff Smith. Legislative advocacy, Mark Parisi, again, will have some pertinent information. Sandra Prisco, if you remember, Mrs. Prisco was one of the applicants when we had to interview for the open position we had on the board. She seemed very excited to be on this. Roberta Vananda, who couldn't make last night's meeting, but is, was a longtime board member herself. In fact, at one point, she sat on the State Board of Education, so it'll be nice to have her on the committee also. Operations, again, Matthew Clark is returning, Matt Giacchetti, Stefania Kohler. And for policy, William Brown, Melissa Hawley, and Angel Sanchez has once again asked to serve and was appointed, so we're very happy about that. And with that, Doctor?
I have nothing to report. I am...
I will be attending the National School Board's Equity Summit on Saturday, so I'll report back.
Great.
At that conference.
Great, looking forward to it. Mrs. Malley?
Okay. Operations met on January 27th. That was Monday. Okay, so we had all the department heads come to the meeting to give us an update, and Mr. Sanisak facilitated that. So we'll start off with Sustainable NJ. As we all know, all twelve buildings are bronze certified, and we are awaiting to hear the results of the, oh, God, grant application process for the fall. I do, we do, no, all twelve schools applied for a grant for the fall, and we are waiting for the results of that. And then we're getting geared up to then start the spring grant application, which is due in March. As we move forward, we all are bronze certified, but there is, Lindsay Treadle makes sure that the applications stay current, because some of those points will expire over time, so they have to be resubmitted. So she'll, she's the point person to make sure that all those points stay current and keeping everything up to date on that. She's been doing an excellent job. And of course, we're continuing to monitor the electric and the solar. Okay, next is transportation. First and foremost, we need drivers. So if you know anybody that's looking for a great job, tell them to contact us for our driving position. We have three that are training right now. You have to, an applicant has to get the permit on their own, but we provide the training, which takes about two to three months, and then you'll be happily driving wonderful children back and forth to school. We do have four large buses and two vans that are aging out this year, so in September, those six vehicles will no longer be able to be used, so we will have to address replacing those with finance some point soon. Okay, we have, the red light camera project was on hold. Is there any update on that, Mr. Sanisak?
We are working out a confidentiality issue with the police department.
With the police?
It is well underway and will be resolved, one way or another.
Excellent. But as a, you know, the prototype run of the cameras has been very successful, so we're just going to see how we can move forward with that. Again, that will be something we'll have to discuss with finance, the costs of putting cameras on all the buses or some of the buses, however we decide to move forward. Shared services with Freehold Barrow, we are looking now into doing some summer program busing, YMCA, swim, and ESY. And then we also upgraded the radio system, because Howell, I'm sure a lot of you know, has a lot of dead spots, so throughout the town, but the radio system seems to be working better for communication in that respect. Some of the goals coming up, the rollover, you know, eighth graders leaving, preschoolers coming in, so we have the rollover, and we are also going to continue to make routes more efficient, consolidating routes, things like that. That's going to continue moving forward. I'm sure many of you have heard that Freehold Regional may, most likely, will be eliminating courtesy busing altogether. courtesy busing altogether, so we are trying to avoid that. We do want to continue to provide the services, but we do have to make some efficient changes, continue to make efficient changes. And, okay, that completes transportation. Buildings and grounds, we have a couple of projects that need to be worked on, where there's some rising walls in Greenville and Adelphia have little cracks. They're not, it's not dangerous, there's no stress, there's, it's not a danger to anyone, but there is some leaking as a result of the cracks, so they do have to be addressed. Ardena Brickpointing is a project we're looking at for the summer. We have to also update or replace the fire panels in nine buildings, and that's already on schedule and from the Capitol Reserve, so that's great, already taken care of that way. Newberry Cafe wall repair replace is also on, we have a Mason dump truck, it's 20 years old, and we've been keeping it on the, running quite well, but it's reached the end of its life, so we're gonna have to talk about replacing that with the Finance Committee coming up later in the year. It's very, we rely on it a lot for snowstorms, although we don't seem to get any of that anymore.
You had to say that.
I know, I just did it, didn't I?
That's like talking about overtime.
I jinxed it, I know.
Now we're going to overtime.
I'm sorry, but my children want snow. I have to do what I can.
Schools are closed next week, 27 feet of snow.
Okay.
What's coming to your house?
Okay. We are also continuing to go greener, and we have been doing a lot of that work with the cleaning supplies and stuff. Right now, we're investigating a microfiber cleaning system, which is basically gonna, would replace all of the disposable paper towels and such, with microfiber cloths that are reusable and good for five years. They would be washed every night, each custodian would receive a cart with microfiber cleaning products, and a standard washing machine that uses regular detergent would need to be purchased for every building. So that's, that's the crux of it, we'd have to purchase a washing machine for the buildings. So we're looking into that, we're investigating that. Onboarding and offboarding procedures will be initiated, and the new admin location update. Business side of the building is 90% complete, and like Ms. Mangano said, we're doing a lot of this work in-house. The move is gonna be done in-house as well, basically looking at moving two to three people at a time, moving them in the morning, having them up and running in the afternoon, so that would be the way we would start moving them over. Hopefully, that will go smoothly. And the ESIP update, 90 to 95% complete, almost in closeout phase, which is exciting. The heating is going wonderfully, and the last 10% is basically integrating the temperature controls on the computers, and that should hopefully be completed by the end of February. Okay, OIT, the main concern is securing our digital environment. There's two types of ransomware, malware, operational, which keeps us from doing business, which means we can't do anything, the ransomware, and the monetary, which means they get information on our employees. So it's very important that we keep this secure, and the district takes great measures to protect from hackers and the malware and ransomware. They're backed up in a few different locations, and we can keep data flowing from different locations. Projects upcoming, better connections for the circuit for transportation, upgrading. LightPath will do move to global, the new admin building at no cost, so that's a good thing, yeah. There's another project, reducing the amount of paper documents. The vendor Stuart, working on a proposal to be on a digital paper system, and looking into taking documents, scanning, and storing. Studying use patterns, reduced paper usage. We did reduce the paper usage from 48 million to 20 million copies, but we're looking to maybe make that more efficient. And I believe we're looking into the, just the, instead of having to store all these documents as actual paper, to move it into more of a digital storage format, so that's something that will be helpful, because we don't have any more room for papers. Okay, then food services. Again, if you're looking for a really wonderful job, Aramark would love to hire five more people. We have, ideally, what they would like 48 to 50 employees, and they have 42, 42 currently, so they are looking to increase their staff for our cafeterias. Equipment, we're continuing to monitor our equipment, matching the equipment with the number of meals served. We may be facing a few big budget purchases for the middle schools soon, so that will be discussed further at upcoming meetings. Ted Bridges discussed the menu diversification. Basically, high school menus are basically being served at the middle school level, and because it was all new last year, there was no, he called it "menu fatigue," but he said he start, they're starting to experience a little bit of that this year, so in other words, I guess certain meals are starting, getting tired of those meals, so they're not as popular, so they want to try to introduce some new things that they haven't had before, like Caribbean food or Indian food, and so we'll see how that goes. They're gonna start testing some of those types of things. I believe he's still trying to get meetings together with the green teams in the buildings. He wants to get meeting with the student councils and different groups within the schools to get their kinds of feedback and input for the cafeterias. He goes out to the schools two to three times a week, and now their focus is gonna switch to trying to get more parent involvement with options on food choices, looking into different events for tasting. It was suggested, I believe Ms. Mangano suggested it, and we all, the whole committee agreed that it was a great idea to potentially have a food tasting at the Maker Night on April 1st, because we do have
Good idea. Sure.
Quite a bit of the public there and the community there, so I thought that was a great suggestion. So we'll have to look into seeing if that's feasible. Okay, and next, security.
Make it a wine tasting, and everybody will come out.
Security training for new hires.
We can have grape juice only.
Right now, we have training once a year in August for any new hires, and we're working on videos to show for the new hire training to be put into safe schools. These would be all online videos, and they would be completed before their first day, so this way, if they start before, anytime after August, they would have these video, this series of videos to watch for training, and
Would they be in modular form, where they had to, like, get for completing?
Yes, there would be specific, it's not like they can just put it on, run it, and go make a cup of coffee, there'd actually be prompts throughout for them to have to answer questions and so on, so yes.
Excellent.
The Hazardous Crisis Plan is always being updated. February's the next meeting for that, nurses, teachers, and principals will all be in attendance. And they are planning to conduct a reunification drill this spring, which is a pretty huge undertaking, and so that's gonna be something they're gonna be working on getting done. The district has acquired 30 bleed control kits, and we're talking about training for those and how we're gonna disperse those through the, all the buildings. And I believe that concludes my report. That was a lot.
How many, how many, how many days, how many days did that take, meeting take?
The meeting took, it wasn't that bad, it really wasn't. Mr. Sanisak runs a tight ship, you know, he kept everybody moving very quickly and let anybody talk too long.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Thor.
Policy met January 14th. Our first order of business was putting a policy in place so it does not snow the rest of the year, so I am now countering, counterbalancing the snow
That's true.
... from before. So it will not snow the rest of the year, that is now a bylaw. In all seriousness, met January 14th. Number of the items which you'll find on the agendas tonight for first read are just cleaning up of the language based on recommendations from Strass Esme. You'll see Policy 3159, which is Teaching Staff Member School District Reporting Responsibilities. 3218, which is regarding use, possession, or distribution of substances regarding teaching staff members. Regulation 3218, which is similar use, possession, or distribution of substances for teaching staff members. Policy 4218, these are all moved for first read tonight. Use, possession, or distribution of substances for support staff members. And then Regulation 4218, for use, possession, or distribution of substances for support staff members. Again, these are all first read, fairly straightforward, they're revised languages based on recommendations from our partners with Strass Esme. I do want to point out Policy 5112, which was originally discussed back in the fall, when Mr. Gorman was in the chair seat, and it's moved to first read tonight. This one, the entrance aged policy that we had in place left room for, I think, multiple interpretations, and the reason that this became important, that we explored, was because there were situations where a student would have completed kindergarten in Staten Island, New York, for example, and because of their birth date, were unable to attend first grade, because we have a cutoff of the end of October, I think it is the end of, whereas New York was the end of December. So we had, we cleaned that up, it's in your agenda tonight to review for first read. It's my first time as Chair of Policy. Do we have to read that, or is that
No.
Part of the consent?
It's part of the consent, sir.
Okay, I wanted to confirm, thank you. On second read tonight, Policy 6112, this is for reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. An important one that's moved to first read tonight is Policy 9400, this is regarding media relations. This is an update in the language, and I, while it is on first read tonight, I did feel that it was important that both Mr. Bon Giovanni is our president, and then Ms. Mangano is Chair of Community Interaction, both had a chance to review it, because I felt it not only impacts you, because you are spokesperson on behalf of the board, but also media relations obviously directly impacts community relations, community interaction.
It cleaned up a lot of language, it was, thank you.
I have a question about 9400, actually. It's generic and clean, but I'm wondering if it's also including social media, because I would consider community pages on social media as the same as talking to a reporter.
They're not the same, because the other, the regular policies regarding dealing with the media.
Right.
Newspapers, et cetera, that's what this was regarding.
No, I know that, I know that. I'm just, I'm questioning whether we should consider something for, some language for social media when you're, especially when you're dealing with community pages on social media that are run by, that are, that are basically a news outlet on social media for the community. So I think that perhaps we should invest, we should look into having language that includes that, or something kind of a policy like that.
I would ask, I would ask Mr. Sanisak to talk to Mr. Reuters when he returns. Absolutely. And see what current information he can provide on that, and that should probably, definitely come back to, probably definitely, that should come back to, to policy to look at again. I mean, I think that, over time, that's going to continue to be an issue, it's not gonna go away, and it should be looked at periodically, so certainly, if Jan could give you some information on Absolutely. And bring it back, that would be a great idea. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Rose.
Thank you.
So, let me ask one. Mayor Rose, are you suggesting, and maybe we should suggest a separate policy for social media, or to include
Potentially.
Or to include social media in existing policy 9400?
But that, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know, last year, Al, we did attend that social media policy, and I thought we had one.
Yeah, turn to Michael.
Okay, I thought that we had one, because that was one of the first things they said. That was like, almost a year and a half ago. Okay.
9400 specifically deals with media outlets, so if there was, regarding social media, would have to be dealing with the current policy that was discussed last year.
I understand that, but I'm specifically speaking about community pages that are news media on social media, so I'm specifically reaching just for those particular places, because they can be considered, you could consider a person that runs a community page as a reporter, reporting out to the community after you've spoken to them, so I'm just kind of reaching out for those particular pages, not all social media, like Twitter and things like that, I'm talking about specific community Facebook pages per, mostly.
In fact, I mean, maybe this is stretching the point a little, as an example of that, when there was a meet the candidates night before the last election, a reporter from Patch showed up. And it would be interesting to, to try to determine whether that's classed in with a newspaper, or radio, or TV, or whether that is a social media site. I mean, people would look at Patch differently, depending upon who you are and how many people read it or follow it, so I certainly think that it's a, it's a conversation that should continue and be looked at.
Patch is an interesting discussion. I'm actually glad you brought that up, because I think that can be viewed in different ways, just because of the way that is set up, but as somebody who, that's my day job, is running media relations for a university, we view non-media outlets, blogs, et cetera, on a case-by-case basis, and I would, at least from my professional perspective, would not view, I don't know, how cares about schools, or how happenings, or anything like that, as a blog at all. It's a community forum. I know that if I'm credentialing, they would not receive credentials in front of that, and we would not consider them media, and that is the industry standard, I can tell you nationally.
But, go ahead, Doctor.
So, and I just say it, these are good things to discuss, however, we do have resources, so we're gonna explore Board Council, and we're also gonna look at school boards. I mean, you know, we have a wealth of
Yes.
Resources within that, when I think, when I attended that workshop last year, a lot of good information came about it.
Yes.
So I think we definitely need to, more than a conversation, use our resources and get guidance.
Absolutely.
My point is, it would have to fall under a different policy, it would not be under 9400 based on the way it's, the way media relations is viewed. Forums are not the same, so it would have to be a specific, different policy.
Well, we do already have a policy on media, on media, so it's worth reviewing again.
Before we move on, are there any other questions regarding this, the age, the entrance age, or any of the other existing policies? Really, the only two that we made substantial changes to were entrance age and the media relations 9400.
Nope.
No other question?
In the policy, you mentioned New York, did you look at other states?
We did not, because this was
I think you should. And my recommendation.
Okay.
Just to get that variance.
I think that's a fair point.
You know, ones within our catchment area.
No, that's a very fair point, we'll put that on, we'll, Ms. Fernandez, you heard the comment, that's something for our next meeting, maybe we can take another look at, see if there's any other states that have a, you know, and I doubt there'd be somebody that would be like the end of the year, but we may, maybe we have somebody who moves from Kansas, and they have a very vastly different age. That's a very fair point.
I do recall when the, when the conversation came up in the, on our last board, last year, and I don't think that really it was geared to be state-specific, it was really looking more at what are some of the dates that other states use, so that we could revise, if need be, what dates we want to use. It wasn't necessarily saying if they came from New York, or if they came from Pennsylvania, it was just saying if this is what has happened before, so, but that's, it's a good point.
It's a good point, and the reason New York was used is because we had a case where somebody had moved here from Staten Island, and they challenged the existing entrance clause, and just be aware that this is only for kindergarten and first grade, it does not affect any students after that cutoff.
So, no, I, I just wanted, for clarity, I wasn't saying just look at states, because the rationales, and what's the rationale, so just more than that, it doesn't matter what state, it wasn't so much the state.
Right.
Look to see what others are doing and their rationale.
And it's all about preparedness, is why we are having that conversation.
Absolutely.
We don't want to put a student in a grade that they're not emotionally ready for either, that's part of it. The last one was not a policy change at all, but being that our meeting on January 14th was directly after the S-2 vote, I asked Ms. Fernandez to help us review what the existing policy was for immunization, just to make everybody on the committee aware of what it was, as, you know, most of us probably have not dealt with that issue before, and I want people to be aware. I've also asked that policy to be forwarded to everybody on the board, because we do have some folks who are, you know, like myself, in our first terms, have not dealt with the policy, and I thought it's good to have ourselves educated on that, not look to make any changes. any changes, want to make that clear. Just want to be, people to be educated on what the existing policy is, so.
Great.
That is all I have from policy on January 14th. Our next meeting is not scheduled as yet. Any questions at all?
Any other questions besides the ones we touched on?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gurman.
I attended the parent university, and again, I don't think there was a dry eye in the House listening to Mr. Hochle. And the thing that struck me, again, his message to the students, as well as to all of us who are adults, was even through the tragedy, try to find some meaning and purpose joy and make, and find that kindness. And I did have a chance to talk to some parents of students who were in the sixth, seventh, or eighth grade after it. And again, I commend Mr. Ozola for meeting with the students because I remember Mr. Hochle saying at the end of his presentation to us, he asked us, who basically determines the culture of the school? And he pointed out, understandably so, that the students, they live there, they're there, they create much of that. And I commend you, Mr. Ozola, for meeting with them and making this a collaborative effort to, to understand them better and to see what we could do to make life as pleasant and as satisfying as possible in the schools. I also was impressed by the 18, you had the 18 breakout sessions, and I know that the handouts that were given, and obviously, people can only attend two of the sessions that night, but the handouts have been prepared of what was presented at each of those presentations, and that's going to be helpful to parents across the board. So, thank you. That's a great, great thing as well. I also had the opportunity this morning to attend the program at Wellness Way at Memorial. And I know Mr. Bonjovani talked about this, but I just think it's phenomenal trying to learn how to help the young people to channel their energy in positive ways. And you didn't need, this is once something where you didn't need audio. All you had to do is watch the students immediately engage in doing those physical activities that I tried to do at the gym. It is phenomenal. I was ready to go. And to see the, you know, going into the room and watching the yoga, and students immediately getting that sense of knowing how to, you know, relax a certain way and have that mindfulness, just marvelous. And then the room with the social interaction, just more excellent. And again, I know that there is activity involved also in providing services to our staff, because we all need to be as healthy as possible emotionally and physically. So, that's really satisfying. And again, we point out how the HTF, and I'm the liaison with the HTF, how grants make such a difference when you have the talents and skills of so many of the teachers and the additional staff, and the principals and vice principals doing that work to make it a reality. And I know the PTA, of course, contributed a great deal there, too. So, it's that collaborative effort of the team to improve our student activities and student life. I do want to report for a moment on the Legislative Advocacy Committee, which met, what was it, last night?
Last night.
And we had our first meeting of the year. We had introductions, and we all got to know each other a little bit. And then we talked about our committee goals. As Mrs. Mangano pointed out at the Community Interaction Committee, where you reviewed many of the bills, the only change now, and of course, you said it, is that the two-year legislative session ended, certain things became law, and others didn't make it, so we'll start again. So, we just talked a little bit, and this is one of the things that the committee does, we review what new developments have happened in the law and what might be pending. So, obviously, we've got a couple of those bills that didn't pass. The vaccination bill, Mr. Thor talked about, the wellness screening bill did not get signed by the Governor. So, they're still up in the air. We'll see what happens in the new legislative session. The one area I want to emphasize that we focused on, well, there are two things. One, I know it's, I'm going to turn this back to Mr. Bonjovani when I finish my report, is he brought to all of us that sense of preparing a resolution, asking for the Open Public Records Act to be utilized so that we could get information from the state concerning the allocation and calculation of state aid. And I know that that was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting since our last board meeting. We had discussed it last night and looked at a draft resolution that members of the committee thought was very good, and I know we'll pass that back to Mr. Bonjovani to talk about in a moment. The last thing I want to mention is really where we really want to go. Mrs. Mangano was talking about this, and this is so really important. This committee is a little different than some of the other committees in that this is only the second year that it's had citizen members. So, it's evolving and developing, trying to figure out how it, not only what it looks, will look like, but who will be involved and how it'll function. And one of the areas that we really want to look at this year is, and I've mentioned this really at the last board meeting, we want to focus on looking at the macro, the big picture, not just the particular bills, not just the activities of a particular monthly year, but understand what's happening in education, where we've been, where we are, where we want to be, what challenges we have, what we want to advocate for. And that's really an issue. And so, actually, Mr. Sanisak gave him, again, as usual, a magnificent presentation before the committee in the last board year, but we're going to do that again, maybe a little revised way, to just look, and just to pick out one issue. Look at how much money came through taxpayer money, through state aid in 2009, and see where we are now, and see where we're expected to be three or four years from now with this formula, so that we would go from $36 million in aid to $19 or $20 million in state aid a year. And what that means, and what that means collectively for our staffing, for our capital facilities, for our transportation, for a whole host of things. But we really want to put it in a very positive way, and we're really looking forward to working with Mrs. Mangano and the Community Interaction Committee, to focus on what education means, how important it is to us. We talk about the importance of national defense, concern against terrorism, concern for the environment, concern for transportation matters, concern for social issues, concern for criminal, penal reform. Well, this is another major area, education. And the idea is to begin to build a community, a larger community, which again, I know Mr. Bonjovani actually talked about today, and Mr. Ozola mentioned frankly. So, our last goal is to recommend, develop, and promote advocacy activities with appropriate community stakeholders to support Board of Education-directed positions. We want to build that support. What does it mean to have an educational system? What do we want from it? What are we getting from it? And how do we preserve it and enhance it? And again, we're looking forward to building connections and alliances with all various other groups in the community going forward. Thank you.
You mentioned, you were throwing it back to me, and I'll talk a little bit about, one of the things that we talked about last night was a, was a resolution. And the resolution actually was brought to us by another district. If you've read the newspapers, if you've looked at TV, certainly you're aware of what's happening with some of our neighbors, Freehold Regional District, Toms River, Brick, you know, many districts around the state who are losing, because of their size, they're losing incredible amounts of money. Some of those districts have joined in with a, an organization referred to as SOS, Save Our Schools. And some of those districts have filed Open Public Records Act requests of the state for some additional information in terms of how they reach their funding decisions. And to date, the state has apparently failed to provide some of that information. So, we looked at the resolution as it came to us. We did make some changes, and it, this kind of ties in almost with the conversation I had when I talked about Mr. Sanisak at the beginning of the meeting today. You know, our children are children, and they're eighth graders today, but next year they will be in the regional district. And even more so, some of those children who are today are third graders and fourth graders, based on what's happening with the funding with the regional, that district has a very strong possibility of being a very, very different district by the time some of our children get there. So, you know, we have a concern about that. We would like to, we would like to be able to look at and provide some support for the other districts. And also, it helps us in terms of knowing exactly how the funding decisions are made. So, the, the change that was made, though, from the resolution that was presented to us, was that instead of providing a monetary assistance at this point and actually joining in with the litigation that is anticipated as happening, I believe you all have a copy of the resolution that we discussed last night. And for the sake of the public, because there are people who watch this, I'm going to, I'm going to take a minute to read this. Resolution of the Howell Township Board of Education to join in the filing of an Open Public Records Act request with the State of New Jersey concerning the calculation and allocation of state aid. Whereas the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, SFRA New Jersey State Act 18A:7F-1 reflects the current New Jersey law that governs state aid to public school districts, and whereas the State of New Jersey, state has appropriated limited funds to fund such state aid for public school districts, and whereas the state utilizes intricate formulas to determine how much state aid to allocate to each school district, and whereas the Howell Township School District is receiving substantially less state aid than it otherwise should receive, and whereas the state should inform districts as to how it calculates and allocates state aid to each school district, and whereas each school district should be entitled to obtain the data and records from the state explaining how the state calculates and allocates state aid to each school district, and whereas the Howell Township Board of Education believes that it is in the best interest of its residents, taxpayers, and schoolchildren to file an Open Public Records Act request for data and records as to how the state calculates and allocates state aid to each school district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Howell Township Board of Education hereby joins in the filing of the Open Public Records Act, open request at no cost to the Board. It's interesting, this was discussed last night, and that committee is the legislative advocacy. So, let's talk about the word advocacy, let's talk about community interaction, and where those two tie in very importantly. We talked about it last night, and I think it's been a continuing conversation that we know when we take the oath, when we become board members, that we accept our fiscal responsibilities to look out for the township on a money matter. We understand that we accept our responsibility to be involved somewhat with the passing of curriculum after it's certainly put forward to us by administration, looking at the, you know, thorough and efficient education for children. Well, advocacy is more than just saying, yeah, that's important. I mean, we have a duty to, we have a responsibility, I believe, to engage in the public and to ask the public to help advocate. We know that our sending in one resolution is going to be put in the pile with resolutions from many different districts. But if the public understands the potential loss that they're going to see, both in this district over the years, thankfully, we're not there yet, but certainly some of the districts around us, and certainly the district that, that will have many of our children in a very short time, maybe they want to get involved, maybe they want to write letters, maybe they want to make a phone call to a senator, or to a, to a governor's office, or to a state Board of Education. You know, advocacy is, is an important part. And, you know, as the nine of us sitting here, we end up having a lot of, a lot more information funnel to us than, than some members of the public might necessarily have. So, where I'm going with that is I think it's important for both the community interaction to help continue to provide information to the public on their responsibility as citizens to advocate both for their children, and for the district, and for other, other children in the state. And it's important for legislative advocacy to take seriously that advocacy word. I know that, and I think it's great, you're going to the program down in Washington this week. I know that Mr. Miller and Mr. Gurman are also going to the, to the federal advocacy program. While we don't get as many of our dollars from the feds as we do from the state, it is important that we stay up on all of the different legislation and laws and efforts that affect us, whether it be the small dollars we get from the feds, or the large dollars that we hope to continue to get from the state, but that are being cut constantly. So, it's great that the two of you are taking the time to, to be able to get down there. I'm sorry, I can't make it this time. I've gone in other years, but I think it's, I think it's important for, piece for us to recognize what that word advocacy means. So, the resolution has been placed before you. I'd like to open it up for any comments from fellow board members, and depending upon the outcome of the conversation here, then this would be put on the agenda to go ahead and forward it to the bodies that it should go to, right, Mr. Sanisak?
Yes, sir.
So, I'll open it up. Dr. Lo.
Just a couple of questions. Like I say, you know, the resolution is the resolution. So, in reference to the state aid formula, so, and so I'm asking first, like, the county superintendent who represents the commissioner, Ron's group, the school business administrators, and the superintendents. So, I mean, I do remember way back, there was several meetings at the county level, and actually, the superintendents, where we talked about the funding formula. So, if we're pressing this, you know, it's public information, but is it more, are we doing this more for positioning because we're joining the other districts? But the information is out there about the funding formula? So, I guess what I'm saying, it's not.
Actually, that's the, that's the issue, is that the.
So, no one knows?
Nobody knows. That's one of the reasons why the different districts have filed this Open Records Act. And I'm going to turn it to Mr. Sanisak in a moment because he can describe it better, but I'll try in my words to put it this way. There are two different pieces of the calculation that are used to the multipliers that they, that they use in determining the factors, and the state has said, we know those, you don't need to know them. And they have yet to release to, so, let's, let's use our fellow, our fellow district, the Freehold Regional, as the example. So, what has happened is the state has said, based on the different pieces that we use to determine, you're not going to get the money because you've failed to tax your taxpayers enough that you and I are not paying enough taxes to support the district, and that we have a multiplier that we use in terms of coming up with this formula. And don't worry, we know what it is, and you don't have to use it. Mr. Sanisak, why don't you do this better than I could?
Impossible. Let me help you. What do you say?
Well, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. The formula is, the formula, as Dr. Lo said, and they use the local real estate wealth and the income wealth as factors in a fairly long algorithm of figuring out both local fair share and other portions of the formula. What they do, however, is they do have multipliers that bring them back basically miraculously to the amount of money they have to spend. And it is the derivation of those multipliers that they do not disclose, and how they come up with those, and how they are weighted geographically, and also by legislative district. So, that's where the request comes in. The formula is out there, as you, as you point out, but those multipliers are what brings it back to real dollars. The formula says what we're entitled to, and then the multipliers determine what we get.
But if the formula is in, if a formula goes from here to here, and if you only know this part of it.
Exactly.
And you don't know that last number, then, I refer to our math person here, you don't, you don't know the whole formula if you don't know that.
If there's one, if there's.
That piece of it.
If there's one unknown, it's all unknown.
Right. So, again, open for discussion.
If the districts get together, they do the resolution, they say no, or they're required or forced to, and then what happens?
This resolution would be part of filing an Open Public Records Act request at no cost to. cost to board, saying, "Please, please share with us the numbers that you're using for this formula, help us use it." Does it impact us? It, it certainly impacts us, because as I said, it impacts somebody's third grader, somebody's fourth grader here, who in a few years is going to be sitting in a classroom that's going to be very different.
We also lost money on this too. We didn't lose as much as the Freehold Regional, but we lost...
Yes, we, we lost, because we don't have the same kind of money getting coming in.
Yes, but I, I just want to confirm, we are getting cut at similar proportions.
Right.
We are in slightly different, uh, positions based on those multipliers than the regional, but we are getting cut as well.
Yes.
The original language for this resolution provided by Save Our Schools, though, had the next step, that if they don't get the Oprah request fulfilled, they're going to pursue legal action.
Litigation.
And they wanted, they wanted us to commit to participating in that part, and, 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 and paying a thousand dollars to do so. We, I believe the discussion was, and I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm, that we would support the request, but we will not join in on the lawsuit part of it.
Right.
Right? I mean, is that, that's a significant piece?
Yes, that's, that's the part of it.
That's what I thought.
That's the part of it.
Would help.
As I said, we were, we were not going to join in the, in the fiscal responsibility of joining in the litigation.
The lawsuit also, or the original resolution also appointed a specific law firm that isn't one of the ones we've appointed, and some other issues like that. But supporting the request for an Oprah, and we could also file one ourselves, uh, to try to get the derivation of those two multipliers, is, is an interesting, uh, piece of information that would help us, if nothing else, understand, um, how the, the decisions were made.
Right. I certainly did not want to imply that we weren't losing money also, but because of the scale, we're certainly losing money, and it, and it impacts us, uh, you know, we'll remember sitting here, and, well, sitting in the other building, and, uh, last year was the first time in how many years that we touched our, our bank cap? You know, we, it had, had funding formulas not been changed, we may never have had to have done that. So, that has, that has impacted us as we sit here today already. So, this is really just asking the State, "Tell us how you're doing it." Anybody else? Then I would ask for a vote to add this on as a, or, since this is coming out of committee...
It can be added as A3 and be voted on either as a consent or separately, if you, if you would like, sir.
Mr. Gurman, that's your committee, would you prefer that this just be added on as A3?
Yes.
Let's do that.
A3 will be approved, the resolution you have before you this morning, uh, this evening, I apologize, supporting the Oprah request for the additional details of the funding formula.
Great. Now, uh, finishing up committee reports, uh, two things. One, I'll add very quickly, that the other night I had the opportunity at New Jersey school boards to sit in, I was, uh, I was asked to sit in on a steering committee, uh, that will look around the state at different wellness issues, and, and mental health issues, and, and, uh, what, what advice, cooperation, support that school boards can start providing to districts, and I was happy to do that, and as information continues to build on that, I'll share it when it comes pertinent. You've noticed that Mr. Miller had to leave us tonight, and certainly, I will never do this as well as, as he would. Uh, if anybody who sits on finance wants to jump in and, and be brave, and try to give his report, great, if not, I can just read the, uh, the committee meeting notes. So, anybody else want to jump in? Anybody else want to jump in? There were introductions, the, the committee members introduced themselves, talked about their goals and the calendar. Uh, the audit, Mr. Holsart indicated that the district's audit reflected that the district is in good financial shape. Mr. Holsart indicated that they had no comments or findings, and again, attributed this to the fine work of the business office. Mr. Holsart entertained questions from the committee. The committee unanimously recommended that the board accept the fiscal year 19 annual audit. I was at the meeting, and I asked about the fiscal status of our food service department. Mr. Holsart informed the committee that it's on the upward, on an upward trend. Budget and committee process, Mr. Sanzak gave a PowerPoint presentation for the parameters and budget overview, a review of the statutory dates for the, uh, federal, uh, fiscal year 21 tentative budget were discussed. Mr. Sanzak discussed the governor's address, is anticipated for February, the school district has to submit a tentative budget to the county office by Friday, March 20th. I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert from the minutes just for a moment to, to stress a word, submit a tentative budget. I think it's really important for any members of the public who are watching this, or go back and look at, at this, to, to understand that the word tentative is just what it means. It's where we think we will be, but we certainly know that changes can happen, have happened in the past sometimes at the last minute, but, uh, we're confident Mr. Sanzak's office keeps a tight, uh, a tight rein on, on what happens, and, and informs this board and the public to those changes. The finance committee process was discussed along with efficiencies that have been put in place. Uh, there is some good news, for the last four years, the ratables for the township have been increasing. If the trend continues, it looks like this year will be an approximate 3% or higher increase. Some challenges facing the district and the committee is the curriculum review and refresh, regulatory impacts, as to state aid cuts to continue, uh, and cybersecurity, tech refresh, and, uh, the stop-arm cameras on our buses, that was discussed earlier, just to name a few. The district has other successes as well, the ISIP and capital project improvements of our buildings, central purchasing, operational efficiencies, inventory control, standardization, health claim review and analysis, wellness initiatives, maintenance reserve, and capital reserves. Uh, we did receive an insurance update, Mr. Sanzak discussed the insurance with the committee. It was noted that the district is seeing a significant uptick in prescription costs. A significant cost reversal from account reviews was obtained of approximately 14,000. The district cost is still under the state health benefits plan by approximately 9,000 for a family, that's great news. Budget transfers, the committee reviewed the proposed transfers, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the transfer to the board. Facilities update, Mr. Sanzak gave a facilities update, we will be moving from our present address to the future board of education. Administration office on Route 9 North, being, coming here to this building. Uh, business side, as we've talked about, is, is being painted and, and looks great already. Uh, department will move on a sporadic schedule for a smooth transition. Uh, different departments will come at different times in order to make sure that nothing is interrupted while at once. Uh, December 4th committee minutes were viewed and approved by the committee, and I believe that's it. Mr. Sanzak, did I miss anything that you think we need to mention?
You did admirably.
Please tell Mr. Miller I tried my best to fill his shoes.
I will.
And with that, I think that concludes committee reports.
Thank you. It is now time for discussion item, I have one discussion item listed, for Saturday versus in-school suspension, sir.
A question was, was raised, uh, looking at the, I'm gonna use hierarchy for lack of a better word, the severity of the different ways that, um, some discipline can be used, and, uh, I'll make it a one versus the other, to try to put, put it in its right frame of mind here. There is a question in terms of the suspensions, if a student is suspended for a period of time, or if a student is put in a Saturday detention. The question, as I understood it, involved the fact that a Saturday detention impacts not only the student, but impacts the family getting him or her there. It impacts what activities they are, may or may not be involved in on a Saturday. And certainly the suspension, while we would hope that parents would, uh, handle a suspension as, as one would, and, and express the dismay and the disappointment at the child having been involved in some type of activity that created a suspension, and, and possibly give them some work, or some schoolwork, or something to do at home, uh, there is always going to be that one child who's going to say, "Hey, I, I've got some time off." And so that was, that was the conversation as it was brought to me, and it has to be put on the, on the discussion for tonight. So, uh, having stated just the groundwork, I'm gonna open it up to the board if there's anybody else who wants a comment, thoughts, what do we think about it? Uh, I'd like to keep the conversation fairly short, and that I have had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Isol about this, uh, quite a few times since it was brought to me. Uh, but let's, let's start here at the table. Mr. Thor.
Having, having never received either in school, I'm a little unsure what happens during each. So, on a Saturday, is it Saturday you're, you would go to school, and you'd have, almost like an extended weekend detention, how does that work?
Mr. Isol, I think that question's to you.
Thank you, sir. So, a Saturday detention is conducted on a predetermined Saturday, obviously, and individuals who have been, uh, dispensed a Saturday detention report there, they are to bring independent work, whether it be, uh, independent reading, or other homework, or studying, and they are to work on that, um, those topics that, uh, they are trying to stay current with, uh, under the supervision of a, of a proctor, a, a teacher.
So, we're paying the teacher to be there?
Yep. They get their, uh, their rate that is contractual for them to, when they work, uh, extra hours for extra pay.
How long is it?
Um, I think it's a four, is there someone from the middle school? Four hours, four hours on a Saturday. Actually, that's right, Ms. Levine's, uh, are you doing it this year? Yeah, Ms. Levine is actually one of the Saturday proctors, ironically.
So lucky. Um, I'm torn on that, because the disciplinarian in me, the father in me, feels as if Saturday would kind of get the point across more, because it becomes more of a true punishment, and would make the student, in my opinion, reflect more on what they've done, because they're going to be missing out on something, which is either free time on a Saturday, um, tending a game, something like that, um, which would hopefully, um, prevent whatever led up to the suspension from happening again. But at the same time, we also have fiscal responsibility, and is that the best use of, I know it's probably a small amount, that you're gonna have to pay somebody to be a proctor on a Saturday. So, I'm, I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I, I mean, from a straight disciplinarian perspective, I think Saturday kind of sends that message that, "Hey, knock it off, this is not acceptable, don't do it again."
But your question, whether we, your question isn't whether they should both exist, your question is, which is more severe?
Uh, well, I, look, we, we don't report to the state, uh, Saturday detention, we report, so if you were to go by the book in terms of the severity, the severity is certainly suspensions, we report suspensions. But, uh, the book versus we, go ahead.
Thank you. There is no debate, we, it is, will become a very circular conversation, with all due respect to the board's, uh, you know, right to have a dialogue about severity. A suspension is a higher level of discipline, uh, not up for debate, it remains in the child's cumulative file, it goes to high school with them, a detention does not. A detention is a, is a station house adjustment, in a sense. I think the dialogue was meant, and, and certainly, uh, you know, I think the dialogue is meant is that there is a higher level of impact to the family and student on a Saturday versus the suspension, and should we be looking at how frequently we're utilizing one versus the other, but I don't want to misrepresent it. But in terms of the question that I think Ms. Okerson was referring to, that you maybe innocently posed is, which is more severe, I don't think we should invest time in that conversation.
Right. And I saw Dr. Lo had her hand up, but then I'll, I'll make a comment about that, go ahead.
I guess, you know, as I said, is suspension an effective practice? I mean, we've been doing it for years, and, like I said, notwithstanding your feeling, um, Saturday detention, all the suspensions never really changed behavior. So, the bigger issue is, why are we still, me, why are we still doing things that have had no positive, I'm trying to find John Hattie's research, because it still is a negative correlation, it's, you know, it's a bigger conversation.
Now, now we have a good dialogue.
It's a bigger conversation, but suspension does nothing to change behavior, it doesn't remediate anything, it keeps kids out of school, whether you do it Saturday, after school, if they don't show up for Saturday detention, then what do you do?
So, from your experience...
The bigger issue is, suspension is a negative practice, and it doesn't work to change behavior, make people remorseful, or anything else.
From your experience, having been in schools, what would you recommend that would turn a negative into a positive?
I'm sorry.
Make him come in on Christmas.
You know, as I said, I...
My question was to the board, and it's my discussion of this topic, I have no problem discussing it at all. Um, when we're discussing, when we're discussing...
The Saturday detention versus the in-school, um, the out-of-school suspension. When this issue came up, um, I don't know how to address this, because it affected me, and I don't care to say it on, on record. If there's an altercation in the school, and there's a physical altercation, and we have a zero pol, zero tolerance policy for physical altercations, if somebody is defending oneself, why would somebody who's defending some self be highly, more punished by a Saturday detention, while the other child is sitting home at a suspension, losing time, not gaining anything by that suspension? We're talking about not isolating children, making sure they're mentally well, when kids are playing video games at home on suspension. So, that's my question. Why are we having in-school detention on a Saturday for a lesser offense than the higher offense, sitting home playing on a video game? Not looking at my situation particularly, it was done, it was, my son attended his, his, um, Saturday detention. Did it affect me? Sure. Did it affect him? I don't know if it really affected him. But knowing that this is going on, we're letting these kids sit home on suspension, parents are working, parents are not sitting home with their children, this is 2020, we all work. Kids are not being, you're, you're in trouble, you're suspended, they're taking it as, "I'm off from school, I'm not in trouble." What do I care?
So, you would like to see an alternative to in, out-of-school suspension, because they're ineffective?
Ineffective.
Mr. Isol, you and I have had the opportunity to talk about this, and I know that, uh, I know that we certainly agree in terms of where things rank on the hierarchy, there is no question about that. But I believe you also talked about the fact that this might be a conversation that your administrative team, including some of the building supervisors and stuff, might be interested in having with you. And it, I, I know this has been very short for discussion item, but I'm wondering if the appropriate move wouldn't be to throw it back to you, and, and maybe, whether it's looking at the research that's out there, and there certainly is a lot of research out there on this, looking at the research, looking at, looking at the fiscal, looking at the fiscal impacts that one might have over the other. But I don't think it's a, a decision that nine folks sitting up here are going to come to today without you having the opportunity to do what you need to do in terms of looking at it.
Yeah, I believe it's an administrative thing, but I also want to bring attention to it, because it's our kids being, you know, our kids need to be, and if the research is showing it's ineffective, why are we doing it?
Right, and that's a great, that's a great point.
So, I think both Dr. Lo and Ms. Magano really stated it well, you know, I think the bigger conversation isn't, uh, the hierarchy of it, as I stated earlier. I think the real dialogue that's being highlighted by Ms. Magano's question, and kudos to her for that, for being, for bringing this to the board level, is, um, whether or not the use of suspension is truly helping school culture, helping the individuals, how many kids are being repeated, and these are conversations that have been ongoing now, I'm gonna say for close to a year with building administration. And there are things that we are grappling with, discipline will be a topic that I discuss with the Student Advisory Council. It is a longstanding practice in public schools, and private schools even, suspensions are, and, um, you know... And, you know, change isn't, it's not something you're just going to, you know, vote here tonight, and we're done, we're never suspending a kid again. I think we have to take a good look at the research, work through our board process, but as well as our administrative process. So, you know, I'll be, whether I receive direction or not, I'll be working with my administrative team to look at that. And those conversations happened as we do our data reviews at the school levels currently. Discipline is something we look at. We look at the repeat offenders. We look at the, we look at whether or not we're disproportionately suspending black and brown students. We look at the impact of those, again, whether we're having kids who are repeated multiple suspensions. What are the restorative practices or lack of that are impacting those trends? So we are looking more and more towards developing more of a restorative discipline model. But again, that, we need to do that carefully, and we need to do that with cooperation and collaboration with the school-level leaders and the staff, so that we have an understanding. If I was to wake up tomorrow morning and announce the Middle School North, Middle School South suspensions are no longer allowed, I'd have a lot of hard conversations with staff. However, if we look at the research and we have intelligent conversations about it through professional learning opportunities, and teams of people look at that together, and we come up with better solutions for supporting children's behavioral changes that are necessary, I think we're going to be in a much richer and better spot. So it's something that's on the radar. Again, I applaud the board for the conversation. Have at it as long as we want tonight, I'm all in, but I just think it's something that we got to grapple with as a district, and the board being behind that direction is helpful, for sure. But if the board was silent on this issue, I have a feeling this would be something we'd be talking about by summer's time.
And actually, it's interesting, because one of the words that you said just real quickly, as part of what you were saying then, you mentioned about the differences sometimes, and we have already, and these conversations started education last year. I know that the district has already taken a heavy deep dive into some equity issues, and certainly, this probably fits right into that category in terms of how does that, how does that piece in? Did you?
Well, no, I was just, I was just, I'm sorry. I was just looking at our policy for suspension, and maybe the language in here needs to be looked at, because it actually says, any student who is guilty of continued and willful disobedience. And I know from personal experience and other experiences that some children are suspended on first offense. So maybe that right there is an issue that needs to be investigated. It should be something that's continued behavior and not first offense, or, and then later on, it says, let's read this. Oop, oop, oop. I lost my paragraph now, sorry. Okay. I apologize. It says that the district shall implement an early detection and prevention program to identify students in preschool through grade two who are experiencing behavioral or disciplinary problems and provide behavioral supports for these students, which may include, but not be limited to, remediation of problem behaviors, positive reinforcement, supportive interventions, and referral services. So that's what you were just speaking of, I believe. Mr. Isola?
Not exactly.
Okay.
So that is ongoing and happening. You know, we identify students who may be in need of behavioral supports, and through our people's service department, our child study teams, our guidance teams, we work with those families and those students. What I'm talking about is more about a paradigm shift in terms of overall discipline, right? So we know, and Dr. Lowe stated earlier, the research is pretty clear on this, that there's not a lot of positive returns for the discipline procedure of a suspension specifically. However, currently, our policy is clear, and our code of conduct is clear, so when you talk about first time versus a building up of misbehavior, physical contact, a fight is an automatic suspension, even if it's your person.
Oh, certain things are, yes, of course.
Right, so we got to be clear about those things.
Absolutely.
We don't want to mix apples and oranges there. But so the broader picture is, what do we want? We want a school culture that is supportive of student growth, but we also need order, right? Schools have to be orderly. So we have to find that balance. I have, and having spoken with both Dr. Hennig and Mr. Farley recently, you know, we've had some really deep conversations about the practice of suspending students. We see when there's other restorative programs, suspensions remain, but therefore, much more severe incidents. We see that from, and sometimes you see that if it's a severe incident, a child could get three days out of school and two days in-school suspension, right? Or in, you know, in a restorative discipline program within the school, where there's guidance and social workers attending to kids while they're in session. So these are very well-designed and thought-out programs, and, which is, obviously, you all know me pretty well, if and when I come to you with a recommendation, it'll be well-thought-out and properly designed, so that it's not just in lieu of suspension, but it has a meaningful impact on the school culture and the individual who actually is receiving the discipline. But it's not, again, it's not something we can, you know, just, we don't want to throw the baby out of the bathwater.
Absolutely not.
We need to look at the whole picture and come up with a meaningful practice. And I think we can do better. I got to be honest. When I say we, I mean, educate, you know, school societies, not just how.
So I would think that really, and certainly not saying, hey, by the next meeting, but taking the appropriate time needed to come up with what you think might make more sense for this district and for your administration, let us know when you, when you think you've, are going to make some changes, not going to make some changes, would like to provide the board with some further detail or information. I think the, you know, it sounds as though, I'm just hearing it in terms of people going, yeah, I think the direction might just be, we know you're looking at it, look at it.
Yes, the direction is that, but also too, you've started that work, you know, that data, we know what our data looks like.
Yeah, we're walking down that path, for sure.
You know, to pull a piece, pull together a full piece that.
You know, I sit here with great excitement. What took place today with our students and the school leadership of the middle school and myself was so inspirational. I know that sounds cliche, is, I sit here, I'm going to say it again, I sit here with great excitement. Some of the things we're looking at in our gifted and talented program and expanding opportunities for non-program kids, I sit here with excitement, and these are all things that are in the works. But you got to be careful about how you roll things out, not careful, but you have to be, you got to have your i's dotted and your t's crossed. You have to think about it through many different lenses. I sit here with excitement about the future-proof program and engaging community in that way. So there are so many things that we are continuously working on, and, you know, you just want to make sure you have it all structured well, so when you go to committee with it, you can answer the most important questions that are phrased to you that night. You can answer questions, you can help staff understand it, you can support their learning in it, you can make sure students are understanding the why, the parent community is getting it. So there's a lot that goes into change, but I sit here with great enthusiasm about what our future is going to look like. We are absolutely going to be a school district that is providing greater opportunity, more meaningful restorative discipline practices. These are things that are on the goal list, you know, my list with my team, with the team that I get so fortunate to work with. And I think we're going in the right direction. So this is awesome that this conversation was brought up tonight, and that the board is, if I'm hearing the board correctly, also excited about some improvements that could be made in this instance, in the area of discipline, recognizing the importance of it, but doing it in a way that is meaningful.
Please, Dr. Lowe.
I just want to share with Mr. Bonjavani, yes, because it's a great discussion, but we do need to remember that we do have a strategic action plan, and there's a lot in that action plan, and so that's their job to do it, so we want to make sure we stay and not, because it's a good discussion, but not add-on. Within the realms of that plan, there are, a lot of those things are embedded in it. So we just want to keep them focused, because they've got to do the work.
Yep.
Okay?
To that point, Dr. Lowe, since we're just in dialogue mode here, in the February meeting, we'll be giving the mid-year update on the strategic plan. I know you're going to ask me that question soon. So we've been compiling that information on an ongoing basis, and I'll be really looking forward to that report next month.
Ms. Mangano, thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanisak.
So it is now time for the consent agenda, and with your approval, we could take the consent agenda and the three addenda items, which I will remind the board of, the two executive and the adoption of the resolution. May I read them?
Please.
A1 is approved settlement agreement between Halt Township Board of Education and AA and JA on behalf of SA. A2 is approve the withholding of adjustment experience and longevity increments for Raymond Higginson for the 2020-21 school year as recommended in executive session this evening. And A3, I read earlier, is the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you very much. Take it around.
Could we have a move in a second, please?
Second.
Move by Ms. Malley, and seconded, I'm sorry, Mr. Thor. Thank you. Take it around, sir?
Yep.
Ms. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes, with the following abstentions, 3000-3, 5000-1.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes, abstain on 3003.
Thank you. The consent agenda and the three addenda items are approved, eight votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record. It is now time for the second public comment, sir. May I?
Please.
Whereas Halt Township Board of Education determines the comments from the public may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 0164.1, and individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer of respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board. Mr. Bonjavani, with your permission, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, sir, may the floor be closed?
Yes.
Move it.
Second.
The board is adjourned. Thank you very much.